So, welcome to the special Landmarks Board meeting this evening. We'll call the meeting to order. It is 6:01 PM. And this is a special meeting for a hearing on 2119 Mariposa. And I want to introduce or turn it over to Marcy Gruing to go over the decorum for this evening's virtual meeting.
Thank you. And Brenda Rittenhour typically goes through this piece, but I am taking the lead this evening. So I'll give me a minute. I'll go ahead and share my screen. All right. Good evening. I'm going over the public participation at board meetings. The city is engaged with community members to co-create a vision for productive, meaningful, and inclusive civic conversations. This vision supports physical and emotional safety for community members, staff, and board and commission members, as well as democracy for people of all ages, identities, lived experiences, and political perspectives. You can learn more about this vision and the project's community engagement process online with the link shown here around productive atmospheres. And so, the following examples of rule of decorum are found in the Boulder Revised Code and guides this vision, and they will be upheld during this meeting. All remarks and testimony shall be limited to matters related to city business. No participant shall make threats or use other forms of intimidation against any person. Obsidies, racial epithets, and other speech and behaviors that disrupt or otherwise impede the abilities to conduct the meeting are prohibited. And participants may raise their hand to speak during open comment and public comment periods during hearing. Individuals must display their full name before being allowed to speak online. And currently, only audio testimony is permitted online. There we go.
But thank you, Marcy. I want to acknowledge that we have a quorum tonight. As with in-person Landmarks Board meetings, the recording of this meeting will be available in the Record Archives and on YouTube within 28 days of this meeting. We're going to do a real quick roll call and introductions. I'm Abby Daniels. We are the Landmarks Board. Pelsey?
Hi, I'm Chelsea Castellano, member of the Landmarks Board.
I'm John Decker. I'm a member of the Landmarks Board.
And Mark?
I'm Mark McIntyre, the planning board liaison to the Landmark Board.
Thank you. We know that people who might be participating tonight may have strong emotions about the project we're about to hear. We want to hear from you, and we found it more productive if you're speaking to persuade us rather than berating us, staff, or the applicant. As with regular Landmarks Board meetings, you can only speak during this public hearing time when we open it up after both the staff and applicant's presentations. Requests to speak outside of public comment will be denied. This is a legislative hearing tonight, so we will not be swearing anyone speaking to it this evening. Mark, see what a difference you've already made in our meetings by being the liaison. As board chair, I will call for a roll call, roll call vote on any motions made. And next, I believe we have the group agreements that came out of our July 2022.
Thanks, Abby. We took those out, and I meant to follow up with you.
No problem. Let's proceed to the public hearing, 2119 Mariposa Avenue, and Marcy will be making the presentation.
All right. Thank you, Abby. Okay, so this is a public hearing to consider adopting a resolution to initiate the process for landmark designation of 2119 Mariposa Avenue pursuant to Section 911.3 of the Boulder Revised Code, or alternatively, issue a demolition approval pursuant to Section 911.23 of the Boulder Revised Code. The owner is Vanessa Miles, and the applicant is the City of Boulder Landmarks Board. So as Abby mentioned, this initiation hearing is legislative in nature, which means board members do not need to reveal any ex parte contacts. We'll begin with a staff presentation, followed by any board questions, followed by the owner's presentation, as well as board questions. The public hearing is then opened for three minutes each, and the board may ask questions of the public. The owner then does have a chance to respond to anything that was said, and then the public hearing is closed. The board discusses and, if appropriate, adopts a resolution or makes a motion. So this application started back in November when we had a demolition for the house and garage submitted, and staff referred the application to the Landmarks Board as the date of construction of the house was estimated to be 1940. In January, the Landmarks Board held a public hearing and placed a stay of demolition on the application. And on April 12th, the board voted to schedule a hearing to initiate landmark designation or issue the demolition permit. On May 3rd, the board voted to continue the hearing to allow time for the structural report to be completed, which brings us to today, May 26th, which is the public hearing this evening. I do want to mention that during the stay of demolition between January and April, the two representatives of the Landmarks Board, Abby Daniels and John Decker, and I met on-site, I think for two site visits, to see the property and walk through it. So the Landmarks Board options in front of you tonight would be to not initiate landmark designation, in which case the stay of demolition would continue for a few more days until May 29th. If the board allows the stay to expire, then we will approve the demolition application after May 29th. Your second option is to initiate designation of the property as an individual landmark by adopting the resolution, which was included as attachment A. And that means the Landmarks Board designation hearing would be held between 60 and 120 days, which would be towards the end of July through September. Your third option would be to approve the demolition application. That approval would be valid for 180 days and cannot be extended. You do have a fourth option, which would be to take no action. And if the board chose that, or that was the outcome, then the stay would continue, and then the demolition would be approved on May 29th. Because there's only three Landmarks Board members this evening, that's the minimum required for a quorum, so you would need to make a unanimous decision in order to take action tonight. So the criteria for your review is found in Section 911.3, and it goes into seven different criteria. The first talks about probable cause to believe the building may be eligible for designation. Second asks whether there are currently resources available to complete the community outreach and historic analysis. Third asks whether there's community or neighborhood support for the proposed designation. Fourth is whether the buildings may need the protection provided through designation. The fifth one talks about potential boundaries, which isn't applicable for tonight's hearing. Sixth is in bounds the proposed designation is consistent with the goals and policies of the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan, or the proposed designation would generally be in the public interest. So this property is located on the north side of Mariposa, just west of 22nd in the Lower Chautauqua neighborhood. And there's an alley that runs along the rear of the property. This house was constructed around 1937 to 1940. It's a vernacular house with bungalow elements, and the stone cladding, we believe, we know was added later. We believe it was added around 1940. It was associated with Cecil Cox and Donald McCormick. The Cox family had various businesses that operated downtown. And Donald McCormick was a gardener that worked in this for many years. And both families owned the property for many years. Um, there we go. It's the properties located in inner urban park, which was first established in 1908, but really didn't develop until the post-war boom in the 1950s. And it is not located in an identified potential historic district. Here are a few photos of the building as we move from the front of the house, which is on the left, to the back or rear elevation. And then going along this side, you can see the vernacular stone masonry building with concrete shelves and exposed rafter tails. And then, one, let's say, major change since the Landmarks Board last saw this is that the, following the structural report, which I will summarize next, the owner is willing to keep the garage, and so she has revised the demolition application to be just for the house only and not for the garage. So if the board takes action tonight to approve the demolition or take no action, it's for the house only, and the garage will be kept. And if it is proposed for demolition in the future, that would be a new and separate application. All right, so the reason that the hearing was continued was to provide time for Atkinson-Nolan, who is an internationally known structural engineering firm that's located here in Boulder. They specialize in historic masonry. The reason we continued the hearing was to provide time for that to be completed. And we received it late last week, and it had some findings that I would say reinforce what we have been talking about during this day, but also had a little bit more information in terms of the construction of the building. The first is that there's two construction types on this relatively small building in that the rear 11 feet of the building have a different floor framing, exterior sheathing, and masonry wall in the crawl space, which I think raises more questions about the construction history of the property, but I don't think are, you know, key to the board's decision this evening. One of the major findings is that the foundation is shallow and doesn't go up below the frost depth. There's settlement in the southeast corner, due in part to the planter that's located in the soil that is located at that corner of the building, and then the chimney just provides a lot of weight that's pulling, pulling towards the southeast. The stone is unfurled random rubble that varies between four and nine inches thick. Some is one width, one width, other are two widths, but it's unreinforced masonry, and there are vertical cracks visible, especially on that northern elevation. And then the cantilever roof support at the entryway is also problematic in that it's supported, it's under-supported in terms of that wrought iron railing that looks like it was replaced probably in the 60s. So in order to address the structural issues of this building, there would need to be basically a second structure constructed on the interior with a wood frame to stabilize the masonry. And then the foundation would need to be either underpinned or completely replaced in order to get the required depth. So the estimated cost of repair for the structural report is estimated to be about $200,000, which brings the total estimated cost of the project to about $630,000 or about $760 per square foot. And while there's not a specific formula to determine what is too much to require in terms of rehabilitation, generally, my understanding is that the current cost of new construction in Boulder is about $400 a square foot. So this is getting close to double for kind of mid-range cost of construction. So I'll next go into the staff analysis of the code criteria. The first one asks, is there probable cause to believe the building may be eligible for designation? Staff believes that the building is potentially eligible based on its architectural, historic, and environmental significance. It's a stone-clad vernacular bungalow with craftsmen elements, and it has a very high level of integrity. It has historic significance versus association with the Cox and McCormick families, and then it has environmental significance for its relationship to the character of the neighborhood. However, as we go into the following criteria, initiation of designation over an owner's objection requires additional staff resources, including outreach and analysis. There are limited staff resources available to process applications for designations without the owner's consent or community support. Diverting resources away from other board and program priorities is not something we recommend. Next, is there community and neighborhood support for the proposed designation? There has been some community support since the application was submitted last fall. At the January 4th hearing, three members of the public spoke. In support of preservation, one person spoke, also wrote to the Landmarks Board. And then during the stay of demolition, one additional community member spoke, and two reiterated their opinions. And two additional members of the public wrote to the board to advocate for preservation. So I think since the last meeting, you've received three letters, two in support of preservation and one in support of the demolition application. The buildings, do the buildings need protection provided through designation? There is an active application for full demolition of the house, not the garage. And so if the board does not take action prior to May 29th, then the stay would expire and the demolition would be approved for the house. In balance, is the proposed designation consistent with the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan? Policy 2.27 states that the city and county will identify, evaluate, and protect buildings, structures, objects, district sites with historic architectural, archaeological, or cultural significance with input from the community. However, the plan does not speak specifically to designation over an owner's objection. Staff and members of the Landmarks Board met with owners during the stay of demolition. And as I mentioned, the garage has been removed from the request. Next, the proposed designation would generally be in the public interest. Staff considers that designating this property over the owner's objection would not represent a reasonable balance between private property rights and the public interest as outlined above. And I think here I would just note that I really appreciate having the structural report to make our staff recommendation, as well as a estimated cost of restoration or repair. Often, we're making these recommendations, and the board are making these decisions on vague information. And I think in this case, the method of construction of this building has resulted in its structural deficiencies that we see today. So with that, staff recommends that the Landmarks Board not initiate designation for the following reasons. One is that the owner has considered alternatives to demolition of the house, but given the condition and cost, does not consider preservation of the house to be feasible. The stay of demolition has provided time to consider alternatives to demolition, and through that process, an alternative for the garage has been found as the owner has revised the request to oppose demolition of the house only. With that, I'll just check back in. That completes my staff presentation. We'll now move to the applicant presentation, followed by public participation. After the last person from the public has spoken, the applicant will have a chance to respond. After that, the board will discuss and make a motion. And so, the main question in front of you all tonight is, should the Landmarks Board initiate landmark designation over the owner's objection? If yes, vote to initiate designation, and the board hearing would be held within 60 to 120 days, followed by city council review. And if no, then you can either vote to not initiate designation or take no action. In those cases, the stay would continue to May 29th, or you can actively vote to approve demolition. So with that, I am happy to answer any questions the board may have.
I don't have any, Marcy.
Just to confirm what you said earlier, you said that if it's not a unanimous decision, then no action will be taken, and the stay of demolition will expire at the end of May 29th, I think you said.
That's correct. Yes. So it's a little bit unique that the board has just three members, though. Yeah, three members tonight, so it does need to be unanimous in order to take action. What'd you say, John?
Any kind of action.
Any kind of action, yes.
But we could also take no action.
Right. That's easy.
Yeah, that's, yeah. And Marcy, even if we had a full board tonight, it still would take three affirmative votes for any motion, right?
Yes. Yeah.
Hi, this is Mark. I have a quick question. Did we learn anything of any real significance from our engineering report that was not already shown in the applicant's report? And the follow-on would be, in hindsight, was the city-initiated engineering report required?
I really appreciate that question. So the first structural engineer that the owner spoke with didn't put together a report, and my understanding is that he was on the property for maybe 15 minutes and threw out some numbers and some general structural issues, but that wasn't sufficient in terms of really understanding this building. So I personally learned a lot from the engineering report and found it to be really helpful in this case. And I would say it's not something that we could do for each demolition case, but I think that the unique kind of history of construction, where it was built as a frame building, and then masonry was added onto it, having an expert weigh in on what is the condition and what are the issues was a good use of city resources in this case.
Great. Thank you.
So if John or Chelsea don't have any questions for Marcy at this point, we can move on to the applicant's presentation.
Yeah, I have no questions at this point.
Thank you. And I know Vanessa is on this call.
Vanessa, you should receive a pop-up to be promoted. Great. Looks like it's happening.
There we go. Can y'all hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. I don't really have that much more to say over what Marcy's already said. Just that I've, you know, I appreciate everything I've done, and I really wanted to save this little house. And I'm sad that it isn't really possible, I guess, to save it. And I am kind of excited about fixing up the garage, making it cute, making it, making sure it stays around, because I think we can do that relatively easily. And at least there'll be a piece of the history there. And that's it. I mean, we've had a lot of details on this and a lot of meetings on a lot of days. I don't really have much more to say.
Thank you, Vanessa. And I will come back to you after any public comments in case there is something you want to add or address.
Okay.
But thank you, Vanessa. So are there any members of the public who are wanting to speak to this this evening?
And so, if you are interested in speaking to the board this evening, you would use the raise hand function in Zoom, and on the phone, I believe that is star nine. And we will just give a few minutes in case anyone who is attending the meeting would like to speak this evening. And, um, I have not seen any hands raised for this item, so I don't know, Brenda, how long you typically wait. We can wait a little longer, but I think I don't see anyone who's wishing to speak on the public comment.
I think a good count to seven is sufficient, Marcy.
Okay. Wonderful. Okay. Seeing none, I would pass it back over to Abby.
Thank you, Marcy. And Vanessa, I assume you don't need an additional three minutes to respond to no public speakers. But I do want to thank members of the public who wrote in support of initiating this house, as well as the letter we got from someone who didn't think it was in alignment with the balancing between the city's code and the comprehensy plan. So that being said, we will bring this back for board discussion. I do ask that everyone mute your computer or phone for the duration of the discussion. We've allotted approximately 30 minutes for this deliberation, but we will pick whatever time is needed. I know Audrey will be keeping us on track by timing this. I don't know, Chelsea or John, if either one of you would like to start or jump in.
Um, I could start.
Thanks, John.
There's a few, I guess, comments I have, having gone to this house and having investigated a little bit beyond that on my own. I spent a certain amount of time talking to the neighbor about the house. And, um, and it's a very interesting little house. And it is interesting because it is, at least aesthetically or externally, a good example of what it is, a house of that period with the applied masonry veneer. Well, it's kind of, it's a kind of full white veneer, and so it's an interesting form of construction. It was also a kind of interesting set of lessons in all the wrong things you could do if you built a house intended to last for more than 80 years or 100 years. It did last for that period of time with marginal conditions. The other things that I observed, just from what I've been seeing in the town, in other areas, was the kind of impact and/or effects the 2013 flood had on properties that had been in repose up until that point, and then various deleterious processes were set into motion by that flood. All of that being said, this would have been a type of a house that I would have thought met the criteria for landmarking and provided kind of a nice little piece to the community. However, I can't make the balance between what the cost to restore this to any level of utility is going to be against private property rights. And my impression of Vanessa and the intention going into this was, the intention was to restore the property and to save it and use it. And it just was full of hidden secrets and bombs that were revealed when the process started. It was partially deconstructed already on the interior, and it just was overwhelming to put this thing together in a way without additional resources. All of that being said, I agree with staff's memo, and I agree with the fact that we should let this one pass. But I'm also going to make this statement, which I've made before. Somehow, some- Somehow, some activist component of the preservation community needs to engage in resource development of some kind. Many communities that have active preservation programs, larger towns like Pittsburgh and um, towns that are very dedicated to historic preservation, like um, Charleston and um, other southern towns have resources available. They aren't necessarily public, they're private, but there are groups and and sources of funding. We need to develop that if we're going to be able to save some of these more marginal properties. Otherwise, we're going to end up losing them all. And some of this is directed at what we're looking at now more and more is mid-century modernism, which in many cases was horribly badly built at the level of technology that it was built at and is causing a great deal of problems, bringing it up to any kind of performance levels or um, other survival levels. So we have to let this one go to properly respect the program's relationship to the community.
Thank you, John. Chelsea?
Yeah, I um, I appreciate staff's recommendation. I agree with it. Um, I don't necessarily agree that this is clearly a building that should be landmarked um, based on the criteria, but I don't want to belabor this meeting. And so I I agree that we should approve the demolition request. Um, it's it's been, we've taken this property owner through quite a bit of hoops. And if we can save her four days, I think we ought to do that based on the information that we have. And I'll leave it there. Oh, and I do just want to also say I really appreciate Laura Kaplan's email um, that she sent to us. I I agree with everything that she has said. I think it speaks to some of the feelings that I've had about a lot of projects that we've looked at and how the degree to which certain projects meet the criteria um, can be debated. And oftentimes, I feel that there is a weak argument for meeting a criteria. Um, but there always seems to be a way to create an argument for why it meets the criteria. Like, the criteria is so broad that it seems like every every house could be landmarkable if we decide we want to do that. And to me, that really diminishes the power of landmarking um, in our community. So I just want to really appreciate the the comments that she said. And I I I hope that this is a topic that we can consider talking about in more detail, not project by project. Um, because I think it is an issue, especially as our housing stock, like John said, is going to continuously get older and we're going to be faced with more decisions. I I think we need to have more specific guidance on what actually is and should be a landmark.
Thank you, Chelsea. Um, so first of all, Mark, I want to thank you for your question because I do think that um, the staff presentation based on the structural report received last week did tip in my tip the way I would be voting tonight. It did make a difference. And also it may, we may come across other buildings of this ilk and with the the veneer added or, you know, the soil conditions or whatever. So in that case, I don't think that was a wasted effort. I do think that this, and I also appreciated Laura's letter and the other letters we received from the community. I do think that um, one of the reasons I think if if an applicant came forward and said, we want to landmark this, I do think it was eligible for landmarking primarily because of its uniqueness and rarity. And that is something that over the years we have looked at. Um, the historic preservation plan that was created in two thousand thirteen and updated in two thousand fifteen did address this thing. And Chelsea, it's a little bit what you're getting on is how do we explore ways to protect the smaller buildings, you know, and and not all of them need to be landmarked, not all need to be preserved. But when there's something really unique or special, you know, we need to see if there is a mechanism or a way to protect more of the smaller buildings. They're simply the ones most vulnerable to redevelopment. Um, you know, my heart's broken a little because I do think Vanessa really did want to save this building. I know this process has been drawn out, but I also, I think that Vanessa, with your patience and with your um, you know, willingness to work with us and have these conversations. Once a building's gone, it's gone forever. So I think that I know we delayed your process in moving forward, but I think that I can live with that because it will be harder to lament the loss of this building precisely because we went through this. And I I think there are important discussions about when do we place a stay and when don't we? And I think that's where we need to make the decision, not at once a stay is made, is really look at what does this. And um, I am delighted to hear you're planning to keep a little bit of history in that backyard that that also was a charming suite building. And I think that um, you know, I I know you're going to be a good steward, and I don't know if you've hired an architect or looked at, you know, what you're going to build in the in place of this this house. But you know, if there's any materials that could be reused or incorporated somehow or whatever, it might be a cre- creative way to explore what what next sits on that property. So um, I just have to quickly, I would be remiss if I didn't quickly say I know it's unique in our ordinance, and I think Boulder is fortunate to have the tool in our toolkit that we can proceed with designation over an owner's objection. And even though I've been involved in, I don't want to say how many applications to designate over an owner's objection. Reality, there have only been three properties in this city. And I can name wonderful places we go into that are public and private homes that if we didn't have that tool at our disposal, would have been gone forever. So so I'm not worried about that, but I do think based on staff's recommendation, along with my two colleagues tonight, that in that balancing act that we have to do, you know, that that I I I don't think um, I can support initiating that this house based on every, all the information and 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 also your wishes, Vanessa. So um, I don't know if anyone would like to make a motion?
I I'm sorry, this is Mark. I I wanted to speak before before the motion, I just wanted to speak briefly as well.
Please, go ahead.
Yeah, um, two things, I I wa- I failed to ask the applicant a question at the time, and if it's appropriate, I'd like to ask the applicant. Um, does the date of the twenty ninth or tonight have any effect on your plans? I I am of the mind that we should we should approve the demolition permit versus take no action or let the um, uh, let the stay expire. So my question to the applicant is, does it make any difference to her in regard to the timeliness of our action tonight?
Uh, those four days don't make a difference to me. I don't have any immediate plan, I guess I should say.
Right. Okay, thank you. And my only other comment is I concur with Chelsea. And I want to um, lift up uh, Laura's letter because I I think uh, as um, I've experienced on planning board, precise readings of the code uh, mean at times that we have to set aside uh, our views on whether something is interesting, something is kind of, sort of, um, maybe something we're fond of or whatever. And we owe it to uh, our citizenry and uh, the uh, public that has adopted and the councils that have adopted our code that that if we um, we have to apply the code in a manner that is that is precise. And I realize that the code it by its nature can't always be precise. It's not always numerical. But in this case, I just want to make sure that the action of the board tonight is not solely based on some economic uh, impossibility of uh, of of this imposition on the um, applicant uh, that that is too extensive for them to rehabilitate. But in fact, Laura raises the right question, and that is, should this home really have been put forth for landmarking? And I understand probable cause and but beyond the probable cause and the initial investigation, uh, over the opposition of the homeowner, I agree with her that that is the most essential question and and is should it have gone forward at all? And so I I just want to make sure that our decision tonight is not solely based on the economics that uh, that it's just too difficult to do. So those are my comments.
We have two design professionals that sit on this board. Um, preservation is a somewhat subjective thing that happens in communities. But there is, there are levels of interest in buildings and contributions to the community. Um, kind of the 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 community's sense of history that are part of the judgment. And those are vague things that really can't be quantified to the level of even a code. It's it's in a given instance, looking at the building, looking at the site, looking at the environment, looking at any sense of the history that's passed that you can see, you make a call that there is probable cause. And in fact, there is value to the community in trying to preserve some part of this particular um, built instance. And and so it's an interesting discussion. And there are a lot of ways to mark history. There are a lot of ways to like edify the kind of memory of what happened in a community. Um, but it's an important process. It's something the community grapples with continuously. And at the same time, you you can't do it numerically. But in this instance, I and the other design professional felt that there was value in this house, at least to work to look at preserving. And my understanding was that the owner saw that value, at least to the degree to start trying the process. And so, yeah, it was worth going through this extended process to make a determination. And I think it's also worth further um, the full documentation process of the house. It was a style of construction that happened here. It may have been colloquial. It may have been um, rare, and in fact, that makes it more interesting. But it's worthy of documenting and somehow marking. It's something that happened. And we'll leave it at that.
I I agree, John. And you know, Mark, and you raised some interesting points, as as did Chelsea and and Laura's letter. But I think we all bring our own experience and, you know, staff's expertise in a memo when when they recommended placing a stay on this. So we all do bring different things to the table to have that dialogue. And I've never made a decision on this board that's based solely on one factor. You know, we have to weigh it all as as we look at it. Um, so um, but that's very thought provoking and something that may be valuable at a retreat one day.
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion um, to approve the demolition request.
I will pull that uh, up for you. Give me a minute. Here we go, okay. We had a lot of potential motions drafted. Let me just make sure, just read it before you uh, read it out loud. Uh, yes.
You're not sharing your screen, or at least I don't see anything.
Yeah, I don't see it.
Bear with me. Can you see it now?
Yes. Okay, so I moved to the landmarks board, approved the application for demolition, finding that the house at two one one nine Mariposa Avenue does not meet the criteria for initiation pursuant to section nine eleven three, initiation of designation for individual landmarks and historic districts of the Boulder Revised Code nineteen eighty one and in balance is not consistent with the goals and policies of sections two point two seven of the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan.
Is there a second? John?
Um, I I not real happy with the language and
I and I'll just jump in, John. My my preference would have been not to to make a motion not to initiate tonight.
Yeah, I I I prefer that.
Well, so then can we at least have a vote? I made a motion, so you can say no to my motion, right? But
Okay.
If there's no second, if there's no second.
No, there's no second at this point.
There's no second. Okay, sorry.
Marcy, thank you for pulling up the language not to initiate landmark designation.
If if there was a bigger space of time between tonight and the um, expiration of the stay, I would support lifting it now, but I I don't think it's worth doing that. That that language is troubling because we did find at least initially that there was value in the property. And I it's it's kind of wiping it. Even though the whole action is public record at this point.
John, this um, motion up on the screen has similar language in terms of its findings. And so the board's other option is to just not take action, in which case the stay would expire on the twenty ninth.
Yeah. I could make this motion if that's okay.
You're welcome to.
I move that the landmarks board adopt the staff memorandum dated May uh, gotta move my stuff. May twenty fifth, two thousand twenty three is the findings of the board and not initiate the process for landmark designation, finding that it does not meet the criteria for such initiation pursuant to section nine dash eleven dash three, initiation of designation for individual landmarks and historic districts of the Boulder Revised Code nineteen eighty one and in balance is not consistent with the goals and policies of section two point two seven of the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan.
I second that.
It's the same motion, though. I mean, it's
But it's, I I was just troubled by it as a cutoff motion.
I don't understand.
Okay, I'll explain further. When we, what I'm troubled by is the fact that when we approve a a demolition application, we need to add language that a, a demolition application, we need to add language that actually addresses the manner of demolition and/or deconstruction of the building. That's completely absent from the one we had. And I think it needs to be recrafted to include that. And to also include the condition of full documentation, et cetera, even though that's in the report.
I don't understand why. I, I don't, I guess I just don't agree.
I don't, I don't think we should be making motions to demolish, frankly.
I agree. Okay. I guess we're essentially doing that, but I mean, it is within our scope of responsibilities to approve demolition requests. So that feels wrong that you, we, like, that we can never
We can, but I'm, but I'm just saying that in most instances, I don't think, I think that we put a stay, we explore, we find that it doesn't meet our criteria to proceed, and then we let the stay expire.
You had said if the stay was further out in time, that wouldn't, that would make
I, I could be argued into supporting it, yeah. But I wouldn't make the motion.
Okay.
So because it's been a motion by John, I seconded it. Unless there's any other discussion, we can do a roll call vote. Chelsea?
I'm conflicted. I think it's silly to not approve what we are approving, which is the demolition. It just feels like an abdication of responsibility. So I'm going to vote no.
John?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So the motion fails.
Um, this is Mark, and I, 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 I don't have a vote here. And I just, I just want to say, Chelsea, I really understand your concerns. And I agree with you. However, I want to urge you that John's motion actually was quite strong in its citation of code and that the property failed to meet the criteria of the code. And while I support you in the idea that the board should be able and willing under the right circumstance and the right property to approve a demolition permit. I disagree with John on that. I agree with you. We should be, that is something that should happen. However, John's motion was quite clear that the property, based on the code and based on the BBCP, did not meet the criteria. And I, and so if I had a vote, I would have seconded his, his motion and supported it. So I just wanted to provide that input.
I, I appreciate that. And I, I would like for it to be noted in the notes of this meeting that I voted no because I, I wanted to approve the demolition request. And I, I clearly made that motion. So I hope that that is noted as my reason for voting no on this.
It was a minute, it was a procedural minutia, Chelsea, that was bothering me. And it's a discussion that we could have
And same here.
Discussion that we could have down the road. Without getting, getting buried in this.
And, and I, I agree with John. So, but because we do need, because there's only three of us and we need to be unanimous, I suppose another option is no action.
Yeah, so it'll have the same effect.
Correct, correct.
Exactly.
Yeah. I believe Marcy said there were four actions. One of them, if we had voted in favor to initiate unanimously, is would have had a different outcome than the other three motions. Marcy, correct me if I'm wrong.
That is correct.
And because the first motion didn't get a second and the second motion failed, are we at a point, Lucas, where we're taking no action tonight?
Yeah, I mean, you can, there's two ways to take no action. You can actively take no action and you can have a vote to, you know, actively take no action. Or if you all just kind of look at each other and shrug and say, well, there's no motion here that we can all agree on, so we're not going to take any action. And there's no vote. Well, then that's also no action. That's more of a passive no action. So either of those outcomes will result in the
It's all gonna Yeah. Sorry, Lucas. It's, it's all going to accomplish the same thing.
Mm-hmm.
I, I, the discussion about demolition is one that I think we should have at a retreat.
So John and Chelsea?
Do, do we want to try a, a motion to take no action, Chelsea?
No, I, I think we've taken enough motions tonight. This day, I don't, I don't see why we would do that.
So we, so the, the net result is we're not taking any action this evening?
And the stay of demolition will expire and, right?
On Monday.
Yeah.
So Marcy, I believe that brings us to matters.
Yes. And just to close out with next steps, so the stay will expire on Monday. We'll still require archival documentation of the house and then approve the demolition application for the house. It's valid for 180 days and it can't be extended. So if the house is not, or if the demolition permit is not finalized within six months, then the process starts again with a new application. And Vanessa, I'm happy to follow up with you in an email or, or call after the meeting, probably early next week. Okay. And then with that, I think we're ready to move to matters. So I have a slide for that, too.
Hey, all. This is Mark. I'm going to excuse myself now. And I appreciate all the time and attention what went into this particular project and subject. And anyway, I have some other things, so I'm going to excuse myself now for the matters section. Thank you all and good night.
Thank you, Mark.
All right. All right. So we just have one thing under matters. This is a special meeting, so our regular matters will pick up in June. But I just wanted to take the opportunity to highlight that the landmarks board recruitment and other recruitment for boards and commissions is open from May 29th and will be open until July 2nd. So basically the month of June, the city is accepting applications online. And between, well, over the 4th of July weekend, or week, I guess, July 3rd to July 7th, the city clerk's office will process the application, send qualified applicants interview signups, send the application packet to council and then post those online. The interviews will be held July 11th and 12th. Those will be completed by two, by city council members from the, the boards and commission subcommittee. And then August 3rd is the date that council will make appointments. So here's hoping that we have some applicants to the board. And if you know anyone who might be interested, please do some recruitment. We have the website online with some information, but of course, give them my information if, if they'd like to talk to me, or you all know what it is to serve on the landmarks board. So feel free to share your experiences. And then if the, if we have someone appointed in August, their first meeting would likely be in September. And then they would serve just an eight month term. It's, it's finishing out Bill Gelik's term. So it would be a good way to dip your toes in into the landmarks board. They would then have the, the choice to re-up for a standard five year term after that. So that's all we had under matters. Any questions or discussion about that?
Well, one quick question. I know that, that over the years, a landmarks board retreat is typically held in the summer. So would you think then early fall or once we Yeah.
Good point. Yeah, typically we wait until the new board member is appointed. Let's continue discussing that because it may be helpful to have a mini retreat, you know, sooner rather than in the fall, or we could wait until the fall and have a, have an annual retreat. Yeah.
Great. Looking forward to someone to take more L D R C shifts. Because there's a lot.
Lots to go around.
Abby, your computer is muted.
But you could see me talking. Sorry. If I could add one thing real quickly, this is just an idea and a suggestion. I'm sorry to throw it kind of at staff. But I understand that, I don't know if it's been submitted or will be submitted, but a application for a civic center or historic district or whatever. This is just a suggestion. When we had our meeting earlier this month, I know there were some people who traveled to Catherine Bart's house to speak because they, they, they weren't like techni, they were having technical troubles logging into Zoom and participating. Is there a possibility down the road with that initiation? I think it'd be an initiation hearing, but when the first hearing is that, would there be a way as we inch closer to in-person meetings to maybe contemplate something like that where there might be members of the public, some who maybe Zoom isn't like easy and instinctual and natural to use? To do an in-meeting person, I just, no responses needed, Marcy, but I just throw that out there.
Thank you, Abby. Yeah, we'll follow up. We'll follow up with you. There, we're, we are not, I think, quite ready. But I hear you. And I hear from the community members who, who want to be back in person. Right. So July is probably not possible, but, but why don't we talk about it and see? Because it is something the city is working towards, but we want to make sure that we, we can do it.
Right. No, no, that makes sense. I just, I'm just trying to think that, or, or at some point is that, you know, if there is an application that moves through the process and that might be, you know, members of the community who do want to speak. I just want to be sure we make it easy for them. So
I appreciate that.
Anything else, guys? If not, this special meeting is adjourned at 7:05 PM.
Wonderful. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Have a great Memorial Day.
Oh, right, right.
Thank you.
Right. Thanks, everyone.